The topic of my talk, workplace creativity. Is it inherently a good thing or not? I'll explain the title in a minute. The picture, you may have heard us talking about ChatGPT. This is actually, I generated this with ChatGPT. It's an image of problematic creativity at work in the workplace. I hope it's not the highlight of the talk. So as you can see, it's quite, it's quite an interesting image there. I'll be coming back to ChatGPT later on. Okay. So yeah, as Chris kindly mentioned, this, Alma did a talk earlier in the year. And Alma and I have written a book on this topic, language and creativity at work. A corpus assisted model of creative workplace discourse. I should apologize, there's not going to be very much corpus linguistics in this talk. And I'll explain why that is the case. But there's a lot more in the book itself. And the book itself is not concerned wholly with problematic creativity. It's just one chapter in the book. And that's what I'll be talking about mainly today. So there's a bit of a, bit of a plan. So I'll start by talking about, you know, what do we mean by creativity? How creative are we? A couple of linguistic approaches to creativity. And then the model that Alma and I have developed in the book that combines these two approaches. So if you saw Alma's talk, that, that's a bit of a, you've probably seen that bit before, but hopefully you've forgotten it. And I'll be refreshing your memories there. So why context is key to understanding problematic creativity? So you know, this is one of the points that we're making when we're thinking about what problematic creativity is. It's often not black and white. It will often depend on the level of context that you're considering. And I'll then look at an example or two of problematic creativity with, and finish off with some final thoughts. Okay, so, so just to start, when, when we're thinking about creativity, I think, you know, in society and a lot of the kind of researchers has seen it in quite a particular way. It's often seen as quite an individual thing. We've got Sir Isaac Newton there sitting under his tree with the apple falling on his head and being struck, you know. And it's often, you know, involves some kind of unconstrained free thinking. It's often seen as quite paradigm shifting, you know, creativity is really big and it changes a lot, it changes the way we see the world. So at Isaac Newton again, often a sign of individual genius and not necessarily related to language or interaction. And also quite positive creativity is often seen as inherently positive thing, I think. But when we're looking at workplace creativity, creativity, I think all of these can be problematized. It's often not individual. It's often highly constrained, as in, as is really creativity in all contexts, I think. It's not typically paradigm shifting. Creativity at work can often be quite, I don't want to say banal, but, but certainly, you know, quite small scale. It, it's not typically something that happens individually. It's often collaborative and it is very much can be a result of interaction and language. And the relationship between language and creativity is a really interesting one, I think. Finally, for the, for this talk today, I'll be looking at the final point. Is it inherently positive? And of course, the argument that I'll be making is that it isn't, it isn't inherently positive. However, when we look at the collocations of the word creativity, then you would be forgiven for thinking that it is generally, generally, generally positive. So you know, words like unleash your creativity, spark, stimulate, nurture, inspire, you know, all very positive. So certainly an underlying kind of semantic prosody of, you know, positivity when you're considering creativity. And the same with creativity as a subject. Impressed or amazed by the creativity, creativity flourished. So this is using the fifty two billion word corpus and ten ten corpus. And that's about nearly all the corpus linguistics you'll get, actually. So, okay, what am I looking at today? I mean, there's the broad general question that Alma and I look at in the book. So basically, how and why do people at work use language that might be creative? And how and why do they use language to do creative things? So that's the kind of overall question that we look at in the book. And the question that I'll be looking at today is really, what is problematic creativity? And how can it help explain workplace creativity? And when is workplace creativity problematic? So to get to the second question, I'll need to kind of introduce some of the stuff from the first one, really. But when we're thinking about creativity, it's, it's one of those, you know, big words like culture and stuff. It's very difficult to define. And is it the same as something like novelty and originality? And I think Amabile says, you know, the nonsensical speech of a schizophrenic may be novel, but few would consider it creative. So Amabile is one of the leading figures in organizational work on creativity. And she defines creativity as the product, production of ideas or outcomes that are both novel and appropriate to some goal. So it's not enough to be novel. They also need to be appropriate to some goal. And this was one of the things that intrigued Alma and I, Alma and me about creativity was, okay. So for something to be appropriate to some goal, that doesn't necessarily mean that the goal itself is beneficial. The goal could be nefarious. And we looked more widely and we found, for example, there's work by organizational specialists, by people like Shumpeter, talking about creative destruction. But it, or engineers as well. So David Cropley, Cropley has edited an edition on what he termed dark creativity. And this nice quote here says, creativity can some, can be and sometimes is used with deliberate intention of causing harm or damage to others. Furthermore, even creativity that is intended to be entirely benevolent and positive in outcome may have unintended or unforeseen negative consequences. What begins with good intentions may end with harmful outcomes. So this is very much the kind of concept that we're grappling with from a linguistic point of view. Because that, that doesn't seem to have been very much work, looking at what we're terming problematic creativity from a linguistic lens. So there's bits and bobs. For example, there's, there's some work by Janet Holmes and her colleagues on humor, which I think, you know, would fall under this umbrella. VJ Batia and Rodney Jones have done some stuff on interdiscernivity that may be problematic. So we touch on that in the book as well. Okay. So when we think about creativity, there's this question about how creative are we? How creative are people? And I think there are a couple of interesting perspectives on this. I'm sorry if you can hear some noise, the next door neighbors having his bathroom re-done. So in, in recent years, Hanks, the corpus linguist says, it has been fashionable to stress the creative potential of language due to the endless possibilities for combining and recombining words. So of course, what is, what is getting out here is kind of the Chomsky in view of language that we can be endlessly creative, you know, with combinations of words in grammatical patterns. The creative potential of language is undeniable, but the concordances of a corpus remind us forcibly that in most of our utterances, we are creatures of habit, immensely predictable, rehearsing the same old platitudes and the same old cliches in almost everything we say. If it were not so, ordinary language would become unworkable. And this very nice quote, humankind cannot bear very much creativity. So that's one perspective, very much a corpus informed one, that when we look at, you know, actual concordance lines, examples of real language use, we find that people are very, very repetitive. Creativity is therefore quite unusual, he argues. Blommer, coming from a more kind of discursive perspective, argues a similar point, but from a different, different point of view, I think. So people do indeed creatively select from different forms of discourse, but there is a limit to choice and freedom. It is the interplay between creativity and determination that accounts for the social, the cultural, the political, the historical, incommunicative events. The connection between agency and structure, or micro events and macro relations and patterns in society. So what he's saying here is that, again, people can be creative, but they're often very much constrained by the social practices, the discursive practice that they inevitably are recreating and involved in. Those very social practices constrain what is allowable and what isn't. So it's not a case of us as being able to be endlessly creative in any way we want. So Hank's perspective, I think, focuses on the kind of constraints of linguistic creativity, looking at the linguistic features aspect, very much kind of text internal, related to our cognitive processing constraints, you know, how much can we actually cope with? Blommer, I think, is a more kind of socio contextual perspective, focusing on things like forms of discourse. And this is interesting, I think, because these two arguments, well, they're not mutually exclusive, of course, they could both be operating, operating together. And perhaps the former may partly explain the latter, the latter may also influence the former, of course. But the two perspectives reflect different orientations to creativity and communication, I think. So in our book, and Alma's talked about this already earlier in the year. So there's, you know, the perspective of linguistic creativity, particularly drawing on the work of Ron Carter. And there's what's termed create, creative discourse, or creativity in discourse, or discursive creativity is the term that we prefer, which is basically the use of language to do creative things. So our overall research question, which I mentioned at the beginning, is really a combination of these two points, these two different ways of seeing language. I'll be talking more about these now. So examples of linguistic creativity, of course, things like metaphor, also proverbs, creative use of proverbs, sound patterning, lexical choice, things like new nouns, technical terms, jargon, multi-word expressions. And in, in the workplace, you can imagine some of these are found more typically than others. You know, alliteration is not, or rhyme is not typically used in many workplaces. You know, if you're, if, if you're a chair of the, of the business meeting, starts introducing the agenda in rhyme, you'd be very surprised. But of course, the use of multi-word expressions and jargon, so on, metaphors as well, very commonly used in workplaces. Then we've also got with what we're terming discursive but text internal phenomena. I put the asterisk here because they can also be seen from a text external point of view. What do I mean by that? So, so hypothetical reported speech, for example, or is, is when you get something like, so if you say, well, we'll send you blah, blah, blah. So when the, when it goes to the, well, we'll send you blah, 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 that's, that's hypothetical reported speech. So it's imagining a conversation, but it's framed in kind of direct reported speech terms. So if you are analyzing that in terms of the linguistic construction, then of course that's text internal. But if you start analyzing in terms of the social actions it's being used to perform, then that would be a more text external point of view. So those are examples of linguistic creativity there. Examples of discursive creativity are things like when people creatively reframe a situation. I think Alma may have given the example from Alison Ray's work on dementia communication, where there is a person with dementia in a care home who's about to walk through a door and there's a black mat on, like a doormat in front. And the person with dementia perceives it as a hole in the ground and therefore doesn't want to walk on it. Now, a carer may say to them, oh, don't be silly, it's not really a hole, you know, it's just a mat. But to the person with dementia, they're not going to see that. So a very empathetic carer could say something like, oh yes, that is a bit scary, isn't it? Let's walk around it, shall we? And that, Alison Ray argues, that's, that's, that's the case of creatively reframing the situation, which we think is an example of discursive creativity, because the language itself is not particularly creative. But what it's been, what it's been used to achieve is quite a creative solution to the problem. We also got things like strategic summaries and what I'll be talking about more later, interdiscernivity. So particularly when you're looking at the combinations of different genres, different discourses, whether that's, I'll, I'll stop there. But also things like social identities, the combination of social identities, I'll be giving you an example of this later. Rodney Jones has been probably the person who's developed this notion of creative discourse the most. And he's quite critical of the linguistic creativity framework. So you remember the linguistic creativity framework most commonly associated with Ron Carter and the others as well, is very much, very much focused on the linguistic features that are being used. And this is how Jones construct, contrasts the two positions. So most work in the language and creativity paradigm has primarily emphasized the formal aspects of language and use, and has only dealt secondarily with the ways language as it is used in situated, situated social contexts helps to create new kinds of identities, social practices and relationships of power. So herein lies the primary difference between approaches that focus on language and creativity and the discourse and creativity approach I will propose. So while the former are concerned with what might be called linguistic creativity, locating creativity in words and how they are put together to form texts, the latter locates creativity in the concrete social actions that people use these words and texts to perform. And I won't read this, this quote as well, you can have a look at it if you want. But what he's saying here is that, this point that when people are using discursive creativity, the language itself may not be creative at all, but the uses to which it's being put are creative. And that maybe, as I say, may be creating a new, he says, a new situation or a new set of social relationships, new identities, these types of things. Now, in our book, Alma and I combined these two approaches and tried to explore to some extent the relationship between them. We also, I'll talk a little bit about the model that we do for that. But that's, that's the kind of theoretical background. Sorry, my head's got a bit blanked there, I think it's the antibiotic. Okay, let, let me move on to this next point then. So in terms of the kind of methodological aspects of trying to find examples of creativity, whether it be linguistic creativity or discursive creativity. If we're using a corpus assisted discourse studies approach, which we do, basically corpus methods can help you find examples of linguistic creativity, often, for example, some keywords like if, you follow that through, look at how it's used, if is often used to frame problem solving encounters, come up with interesting hypothetical solutions, that type of thing. But when we're looking at creative discourse, so you know, what Rodney Jones terms, you know, discursive creativity, creative discourse, the use of language to do creative things in texts and interactions, then corpus tools can't really help us very much. And you need to manually read the texts. However, and this isn't something that we talk about in the book, but it's something that I've been looking at a bit more recently, is however, AI, generative AI, ChatGPT can interpret, interpret extracts in terms of problematic creativity. And if we have time, I'll show you an example of what it's come up with. So as I mentioned, Alma and I developed this model, looking at combining the two approaches to creativity and language. And we also bring in the notion of alignment. I, I, I won't talk much about this now because it's, it's, it's not directly relevant to the, to the talk. But it's important to realize that we're, we're looking at combining these two. And when we're looking at problematic creativity, then the relationship between them is important. Alignment, just very briefly, is the notion that, you know, people obviously converge and diverge in communication. And if we're looking at, for example, a single meeting, that can change a lot in the course of the meeting. It may start with quite high alignment and end up with very low alignment. That means, you know, people may be agreeing a lot at the beginning and maybe disagreeing a lot at the end, or vice versa. And when we're considering creativity, then we need to be considering alignment, I think, because it is such a cooperative and in, interactionally constructed event. Also, when we're considering creativity, we need to consider context, of course. And when we're looking at problematic creativity, I think this is particularly important, because when we're looking at problematic creativity, something may be quite benign or beneficial at one level of context, but it might be quite problematic at another level of context. So in terms of context, we, we're drawing on VJ Batia's model, which in turn draws a lot on Fairclough's model of context, where you've got obviously the, the text level, you've got the co-text, the language used around the particular piece of language you're focusing on. And then you've got these different levels of context, which become less directly related to the text, the more you move away. So you've got your discursive practices, you know, the, the practices, the language is being used to achieve. You've got the things like the professional practices, which may often tie in with like the professional identities that are being constructed. Maybe the particular genres that are being used in terms of things like, you know, is it a meeting? Is it a presentation? Is it an online meeting? How does this affect, you know, the way that people are constrained and unable to talk? And then you've got the broader social practices as well, which may relate to even things like, you know, what, what particular form of capitalism are being invoked in this particular type of institution, this type of thing. So how does this relate to problematic creativity and problematic creative workplace discourse? So as we've looked at already, you know, creativity should not be assumed to be inherently beneficial. And I, I mean, as an example, the, the, the classic examples of what Cropley terms dark creativity would be something like the Manhattan Project or the Holocaust. So, you know, it was goal driven, achieved ends, but those goals and ends were obviously, from many perspectives, very, well, evil. And therefore, can something can still be creative, but very problematic? Now, in, in workplaces that we analyze, that it tends to be, you know, much more like the other type of dark creativity that Cropley mentioned, where things may be, the idea may seem good, but then the implications when followed through, the unintended consequences can be quite problematic. And as I mentioned already, creativity, so we might, it might be beneficial at one level of context, but problematic at another. So it might be kind of, you know, quite, quite beneficial in terms of allowing the speakers to achieve their interactional goals. But then when we look at the culture that's being recreated through the use of this particular type of communication, then it could be quite problematic. And I won't be talking about this, but when we're thinking about what, what, what you might be thinking, what do you mean by problematic? And I think there are two ways of looking at it. So in terms of like efficacy, you know, the extent to which it achieves its ends, and also in terms of the ethical aspect. And often they're not necessarily in tandem, you know, something can be quite efficacious, but it can be ethically problematic. And as I mentioned at the beginning, Amabile's definition of creativity in general in organizational contexts, I think certainly this aspect appropriate to some goal, if the goal itself is, is problematic, then, you know, for either, particularly from an ethical point of view, then it can still be seen as quite creative. So the corpus we, we look at mainly, although we have about twenty years of different data sources that we analyze, but the stuff I'll be talking about today is from the Canvec corpus, one million word corpus of mainly business meetings from a range of different professions. Okay, so let me move on now to, there's another ChatGPT four image on problematic creativity in the workplace. And let me show you a couple of examples now. So this first one is, it's from a internal meeting in an IT company. And the meeting is between, there are three, three senior directors there. There's the technical director who's in charge of the, you know, the, the technical staff, the IT staff who do the technical stuff. You've got the finance director and you've got the sales director. The sales director doesn't say very much. The, the main speaker is the finance director. What she's saying is, she's saying that the technical staff need to change their ways of working. They need to become much more customer focused and they need to consider the, they need to really combine the skills of being a technical staff member with being much more sales oriented. So it seemed to us that G's notion of discourse with a big D is very relevant here. So, you know, you, you may well know G's discourse of a big D as a way of trying to capture the broader sense of the social identity and how it interacts with language. So G talks about discourse with a big D as ways of acting, interacting, using tools, dressing, et cetera, to be seen as performing a recognizable social identity. And he said, you know, different discourses with a big D use different types of texts, which, and different types of texts would be discourse with a small d. So when we're looking at discourse analysis, it's very much the relationship between those two that are interesting. And what seemed to be happening in this meeting that I'll show you in a minute, is that the finance director is arguing for a combination of different discourses. So she's arguing for a combination of the traditional technical staff discourse with a big D, combining it with a more sales oriented discourse with a big D. And in the meeting itself, so we, we were arguing that this is an example of, there's, there's high creative discourse or discursive creativity going on through the notion of interdiscernivity. So these two discourses being combined, that's interdiscernivity as an example, she has. And then you've got a sales type technical person who will think like a salesperson. And she talks about this being a mindset change. Also, in terms of their linguistic creativity, there, there's quite a lot of interesting linguistic stuff going on here that makes her speech quite persuasive. So things like, you know, metaphors like moving forward, be alien to, go bye-byes. There's quite a lot of hypothetical reported speech, things like, good morning, this is your salary talking, this is my box. And we won't talk much about the alignment, but there's variable alignment through the meeting between the different participants. Okay, so here's the part of the discussion, it's a long discussion, but this is just a bit of it. So speaker two is the finance director. So she says, I think it's really, it's also really important, someone we need to, something we need to work forward to is, which is a bit controversial, but is also the attitude as well as that this is very now. If this is going to happen and it's project management driven, to be honest with you, does, their attitude's got to be customer. You know, good morning, this is your salary talking. So here she's introducing the topic that she's saying, right, does, does is the technical director. Your staff are going to need to change the way that they're working. Does, non-committal, hmm. Your salary talking is very much the way it'll go forward, which may be alien to a technical individual, because they're very much, I know what's best. You know, arrogance is an unfair word, but it borders on, you know, this is my box. But the trouble is, if you enter into the world of project management, it's a completely different attitude. But they're not the ones who are doing a project management. Well, borderline they are, because you've quite rightly said that DPN are not technical, that's the sales team. At what point do they become the project manager bias? Because they've actually now got to come in and be technical, because the account manager's not going to be there. The salesman, salesman's gone bye-byes, he's on to the next case. Yeah, blah, blah, blah. And then you've got a sales type person, technical person, I mean, who will think like a salesperson. So I'll say that once more. And then you've got a sales type technical person who will think like a salesperson would think, hang on, the customer's my, the customer's my salary, I better think about this. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I agree with James in a way, I just, I think, because, you know, it's a mindset change. So as we can see, there's, you know, as I mentioned, quite a lot of high linguistic creativity and also high discursive creativity. And the creative changes may benefit the organization, that's certainly the intention. But there may be issues at levels of social practices and discursive practices, I think. So, you know, if we look at the kind of, the, the broad socio cultural level in terms of, you know, feeding into different modes of capitalism, Jim G's, Jim G L's prescient insights into what they term the new capitalism seems very relevant to what's going on here. So this combination of different discourses, this combination of different abilities and roles within a job is something that they turn very much typical of, of the new capitalism. So it's a principle of the new capitalism to push down control and responsibility to the lowest possible level, which is what's happening there, she said, you know, the account manager's going to be gone. Closest to the actual products, services and customers of the business. closest to the actual products, services and customers of the business. So again, the technical staff, of course, have to go and interact with customers because they have to fix the stuff. And now they're saying, okay, push down the responsibility for also selling things and, you know, being much more company, sorry, much more customer focused when the technical staff are doing that. This, however, requires workers now who can learn and adapt quickly, think for themselves, take responsibility, make decisions and communicate what they need. So potentially there's a lot of conflict here at what we might term the professional identity level. So the technical staff may feel threatened by such interdiscursive changes, have done work in other engineering environments where this has been the case. And such changes may be demotivating for the staff and sales staff. But it could also mean, of course, that they're losing their jobs because particularly the sales staff, if the technical staff are doing a lot more sales work, what's left for the sales staff? So certainly from their perspective, you might see it as problematic. And it's also worth mentioning, of course, that the use of linguistic creativity, I think, makes the finance director's arguments more persuasive. And therefore linguistic creativity may enable goal driven communication. And I think that's an area for further research, as I'll touch on at the end. Okay. So that's just a bit of a summary of what I've said there. Now, there's another example, which this one's a bit more kind of problematic in terms of what's said. So this is a, again, another internal meeting and it's a manufacturing company. And what's happening here is that one of the managers is saying, okay, we buy this stuff, we buy this equipment. And from, when we buy it from our British, it's a British company. When we buy it from our British suppliers, it costs, I think it's like fourteen hundred pounds. But there is a Chinese supplier that we can buy it from and they'll sell it to us for thirty pounds. Now, the person saying this thinks that they should buy the stuff from China because it's so much cheaper. But there's another manager or group of people in the meeting, in fact, who don't want to do this. They want to keep buying stuff from the British suppliers. And this, we don't have to read this all of it, but it's basically what I've just said there. And then the person says, oh, one of them, but no, it's Chinese, that Chinese, yeah. You know, but it seems to work really well, it's got a nice wheel, blah, blah. And then the person says, ah, you'll have to take all the kids' fingers out of the sight, yeah, self lubricating. So what's happening here, and as you can see, there's laughter, it's interpreted as a joke. And I think this is an example of what we could term problematic humour. So it's the notion that because it's so cheap, because it's been built with child labour in China, that's what they're arguing or certainly proposing. And then speaker one, who's been saying, you know, we should buy this stuff, he tries to get the discussion back on track, but it doesn't really work. So in terms of, again, problematic creativity, we could say that speaker six, who's the production manager, he achieves certain interaction and transactional goals through this distasteful joke. That what he achieves is that he manages to win the argument of not buying the stuff from China. So the conclusion is that they'll keep buying the equipment from the UK, even though it's much more expensive. This is part of a wider discussion in this company, recorded quite a few meetings in there. And there's, there's been a lot of discussion over this topic, but also tension between these two different managers about the direction that the company should take. So if we're looking at the local context from that production manager perspective, it's been his use of this creative joke, if you want to turn it that, is quite efficacious at the local context level. But if we look at it in terms of the wider socio cultural context, then you could certainly make a case that humour like that contributes to an exclusionary culture in the company. There's lots of other evidence that we talk about in the book. And Louise Malaney has talked about this as well in terms of the same data, actually, that this company has quite an unpleasant culture. And it would, therefore, you know, these kind of jokes are quite normalised. Also misogynistic jokes and other things as well. So, you know, if you're trying to create a company that is inclusive, then they're certainly not managing to do that. But there are bigger issues at the broader socio cultural level that in terms of this quote by Ford Attell, by things like reinforcing negative stereotypes and prejudice in individuals, disparagement humour, which this would be an example of, you know, humour being used to disparage, is thought to maintain cultural or societal prejudice at a macro sociological level. So it's this, it's this point, I think relates back to Blommer's point, this relationship between the micro and the macro in society. So the language that we're using in a particular instance, it does have implications for the wider socio cultural context that we create through our communication. So of course, if it's just a one-off, less so, but if it's a repeated pattern, then very much so. So as we argue here, at the broader socio cultural level, institutions that tolerate certain stereotypes may create barriers to greater creativity because they fail to support the normative goal of developing a culture that is conducive to engaging with diverse views and divergent opinions. So, you know, this, this, so although from a creative point of view, at the local context, this joke may have been quite effective. If a company or an organisation is trying to be creative, there's a lot of work showing that the more diverse your workforce is, if you can manage that diversity well, then you're going to get a bigger range of solutions, potential solutions to problems, you're going to get, you're going to get much less group think. But if you have a very exclusionary culture, of course, that's not going to be the type of organisation that you're developing. Okay, so just some, a bit summary and some future thoughts. So hopefully I've shown creativity is not inherently positive. And it can be both positive and negative depending on different levels of context and the different perspectives that you take. So that's the kind of summary of what I've talked about today. I think more broadly though, this relationship between linguistic creativity and discursive creativity deserves further exploration and not just in terms of problematic creativity, but more generally. There's some work out there, but I think there could be a lot more looking at, you know, particularly like experimental work probably. To what extent does the use of things like creative language, sorry, linguistic creativity in terms of metaphors and idioms actually boost discursive creativity? So lead to greater changes in organisations or broader solutions? So it's almost like, I'm thinking, you know, to what extent do, does, you know, does a good metaphor inspire people to think more creatively and maybe do more creative things? Nonaka has done some work on this as well in organisational studies, but I think it's not, you know, it's not that linguistic in focus. The analysis of problematic creativity from a linguistic perspective, there's not a great deal on this, as I mentioned at the beginning. And I think it's a promising area of future research, you know, in a range of different contexts, not just the workplace. And as I mentioned before, earlier, for us corpus linguists, corpus linguists can't analyse discursive creativity, you know, it's too embedded in the interactions. It's too, you need a semantic understanding of what's going on. But generative AI can, so there's a couple of references. But, but this is just, I'll leave you with this. So this is what ChatGPT four came up with when I did a little, I explained what problematic creativity was and put the text in, that extract from the meeting and got it to analyse it in terms of different levels of practices. And this is what it came up with, so I'll leave you with that. Okay, thank you.